What am I going to cover today? Website accessibility regulations, so a refresher as to what they mean. And also the dot gov.uk domain. We're going to cover some common issues that people come up against when it comes to accessibility and publishing online and the good techniques that you've got to employ to keep that content accessible. I'm also just going to give everybody a refresher as to what parish and town councils need to publish on their website. We support hundreds and hundreds of parishes from £2,000 precept right the way up to £10 million. And there is always a question about what things should be on the website. So I'm going to cover that. I'm also going to go into how can you keep checking your website and making sure that you are keeping up to date and accessible. I'll finish off the session with an overview of what the dot gov.uk domains mean and how you can get one and what you can use it for. So let's get stuck in. Let's do a brief refresher. What is website accessibility? Well, it's a way of presenting information on your website to those who have disabilities. Now, as I'm sure you all know and aware, there are many, 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 many different forms of disability. A lot of people use something called assistive technology, that software and or hardware on their computer to interact with software and websites. That works for them. It's a special way. I'll give you one simple example, perhaps those people who are loss of sight, blind or have site related issues. They're going, they're going to have something called a screen reader. That's a piece of software that audibly reads the words on the page to them so that they can understand what it's about. That's just one, that's just one instance, but there are lots. So why does it matter? Well, let's wrap some numbers around it. Some of you may know this, one in five of every community has a disability or a situation that makes it difficult for them to use a website in the way that perhaps luckily enough you and I do with site, motor controls, keyboard, mouse. One in five, 20% of your community, 20% of your community has trouble using a website and software in a way that we perhaps historically have just assumed it's okay. Well, look, we are all beaten. If I put my councillor hat on briefly, we are all beaten up with the stick of trying to improve community engagement with our councils. Whatever council size you are. Well, here's an instant way to add 20% extra engagement and that is make sure that your website is accessible and compliant. Cause you're instantly going to make it easier to engage with 20% more people. Now, those, those disabilities or situations can range from, from physical disabilities to learning dyslexia, age related challenges. Lots of issues and it matters. Websites aren't built accessible by default unless you specify it when you've commissioned it. It won't be accessible because it needs to be built in a particular way to work with assistive technology. Just because it's a brand new website does not mean it's accessible and won't mean it's compliant. It was likened to me by a retired mayor now, but the mayor was blind. And he said to me, it's a little bit like trying to poke the blueberries into a blueberry muffin after it's been baked. You can't really make things accessible after it's been built. You've got to make sure that it's specified that way when you're commissioning a new website. So if when you commissioned your website and you asked a developer to build it. If you said to them, we needed to make sure that it complies with WICAG 2.1 AA, that's the current standards. If you did, then there's a good chance that it complies. Just a quick note, the standard is raising to something called 2.2 AA from October later this year. There are some technical aspects in the way that the site will need to be built differently. Good news for those of you who have an Aubergine built website, your platform is already 2.2 AA compliant. But it's important to make sure that you specify this level when commissioning a new site. Because otherwise the developer won't know to build it in that way. Well, why is this important? Well, it's really important because every piece of information you as a parish or a town council publish is for everyone. It is public information. Every member of the public has a legal right to access that information without barrier. That's important. But not only is it a legal requirement and has been, so law came in 2018, compliance by 2020. So it's been around a while. If you've not gotten to it, that's four precepts to have budgeted for it. So if you've not gotten around to it, you definitely need to with the change of the incoming regulations, but it's the right thing to do. As I've said to you, the, the best way that you could add an instant 20% to your own community engagement is going to be make it easy for those with disabilities to interact with you online. Covid showed us that the most efficient way to communicate to your community in your area is via your website. If, if it wasn't known already, we knew that. Covid proved that it's a very efficient way of making sure that you can reach a lot of people online. So it's the right thing to do. So where is it that things go wrong? We've got a lot of fail points, some of them more common than others, but here we go. Here's the list of the most common problems that we see and come up in accessibility audits. A first and foremost, how the site's been built. If it's not been constructed with accessibility in mind, it'll never comply. The next bit is a really important thing, and that is the use of accessibility widgets or plugins. If you have a website that's got one of those little blue symbols that's got a person in a wheelchair next to it, it is not compliant. All that it is doing is layering some surface techniques on top of the site, enlarge the font, make it high contrast. But it doesn't deal with the core fundamental requirement of the site needing to comply. Actually, the disability community and us at Aubergine are in agreement. And there is a, an article written by Scope, one of the UK's biggest charities supporting people with disabilities. They wrote an article that explicitly said that the use of accessibility widgets and plugins creates a greater barrier for those with disabilities because this thing gets in the way. And if you have a disability, how can you interact with the site? If you've got to get it out of the way first. It was a liken to me, a bit like when you go to an online shop website. The first thing, as soon as you arrive at the homepage, you get one of those pop ups that says, join our newsletter and get 5% off your first order and you can't find the X to get rid of it. Just like that. That is the experience that people with disabilities who use assistive technology, that's the experience they get when they go to your council's website, if you're using one of those widgets. It doesn't meet your legal requirements and it actually makes it harder. So other fail points, tables, the use of tables, inaccessible documents, link text that's not descriptive. So click here, read more, formatting of the pages and many other things like that. I'm going to go through all of these points now. So let's get stuck in. Here's some basic principles of how you can improve your user's experience on your website. First and foremost, I'll go back to it again. I can't emphasise this enough. Those plugins, those widgets, those accessibility widgets do not meet your legal compliance. They create a bigger problem. If you as a councils are relying on that as your, your means of meeting your legal requirements, your solution for website accessibility, it is a problem. You are going to need to look at that. I've, I've provided on the slide here at the bottom and the slides pages will be shared with you. There's a link to that article by Scope. It's on their, their blog page called Big Hack. And it's a, it's an incredibly enlightening read, just how much of a challenge these things create. But why else? Well, first of all, they don't make your website meet the compliance. They can fix those minor issues like font sizes, contrast, but that's about it. They conflict and actually get in the way of the settings of people who have disabilities and use assistive technology. They often get in the way and override their own settings, which creates even more of a challenge for them. They also are terrible on the mobile and you cannot ignore the fact that in the non-disability community, 80%, yes, 80% in some sectors, particularly in metropolitan sectors, it's over 90% of all users in a community will connect with their council online from their phone. Well, the experience of these accessibility plugins is even worse. They don't offer an equal experience to disabled users compared to those without disabilities. Fundamentally, they don't change the code of the website. They just mask it with a few things. It is not a solution. So I'm going to move on now. Let's do some day to day stuff. Images and graphics, we're going to ease you in a little bit. So I'm sure you are aware, if you add images to your website, you must add alt text, a textual description of that image. One of the most common challenges that we see is where people use images of posters. Great that you've made a poster and that you are promoting an event or something. However, all of the words and the salient info is embedded in an image. And if I can't see, I don't know anything about it. But I'm, I am as a member of the community perfectly entitled to know that there is, as you can see on the screen there, a bonfire, fireworks, stunt show and fairground ride on the 4th of November. I'd love to go to that. But the problem is my computer can't see the words on that image. It's embedded in that picture. If you add alt text, short textual description about the image, at least my computer can read me the alt text. Bonfire and fireworks event, 4th of November. Great. But what is better is to make sure that if you are going to add, for example, a poster event image to your website, make sure that the salient info, what is it, where is it, when is it? Is also typed out onto the webpage. That's very important because then the assistive technology can audibly read that info to the person. But it also, it's words that can be have their fonts increased in size and the contrast changed. But if you just embed it and rely on an image, you are failing your accessibility regulations for images. Most website platforms, such as the example on the screen there, this is the Aubergine one. When you upload a picture, it gives you a box on the right hand side for you to add the alternative text. As I said at the beginning of the presentation, I'm a councillor in a small village in Bedfordshire. Our council uses the Aubergine platform and that's freely available on my declarations of interest. For those of you who are interested in compliance sides of things. As you can see here, I've uploaded a picture to our website platform and I have added a alt description of the rye outside gym rig with punch bag. Well, it says to the user exactly what it is. It's a shame actually it's missing the punch bag, somebody nicked it. So I should update the alt text, but there we go. So when you upload an image to your website, make sure that you provide a textual description for it. Now it's called alt text, not title. Another very common, and people are aware of it, perhaps just as much as alt text for images, is called link text. So a lot of assistive technology will often bunch all of the links off of a webpage together at the end. Well, if you've employed the historical method of doing click here or read more or download. If you, if you do that, all of those are going to be bunched together at the end and the computer's going to read to the person, click here, click here, click here, click here, click here, read more, click here. To what or where? Also, it's out of context. I don't know where it's going. I don't know what it relates to. So the best practice to meet compliance, but also just make the user's experience is don't use click here. Don't use here or download vague descriptions. Make the link text descriptive. Because a lot of assistive technology will say, there is a link. There is a link to, and then it will read the link text. There is a link to parish council minute September 2022 PDF. Great, that tells me exactly what it is. The same goes for websites. Please, please, please do not paste full HTTPS addresses on your webpages. Cause I can tell you, having used assistive technology for a very long time to test websites and see what the experience is. It is awfully painful to have your computer read a web address out of the page, one letter at a time. What you should be doing is using link text like this. So if the link is going to the Cambridge County Council website, make sure that that's the link text. Behind that, it's the full HTTP URL. Great. But I can tell you that it's makes a hard job for people with disabilities even harder if it has to read out H T T P S W W D, oh, only to also then find out that it's the wrong page. So please try and avoid doing these things. In line with that, using good clear text fonts is very important. I might not have a physical disability. I might not have a site related disability, but I might have a learning disability. I might, I might be dyslexic. So using a good, clear, open type font like you see on my slides, not too small, not fainty coloured. This is going to give the reader the best chance. And also I would like to add to that, please avoid using great big long lines of text that are underlined and all uppercase. These create huge barriers for those who have learning and dyslexia. I know that historically we want to impart the importance of a piece of text or the importance of importance of a message. But emboldening it and underlining won't really do that. We think it will, but it won't. Just making sure that it is clear and isolated is good enough. The other thing about underlying, underlining text internationally, that is the standard for a link. So if you've got a great big long line of text that you've underlined, it's going to tell the user, here's a link. But of course there isn't a link to anywhere to create confusion. Another aspect to good website publishing is to make sure that you put structure to the page. Now, this technique isn't just for webpages. This is also, you can translate this skill to word documents. Creating structure on a page is important. What do I mean by structure? I mean the use of sequential headings. You'll have always, you all heard of H1, heading one and those sorts of things. Well, I'll provide an explanation. H1 or heading one is the page's title. So in this example here that you see, add structure to the page, that is the H1. There are no more H1s required for the webpage or the document. After that, for headings of sections, you must use H2. And for subsections of those sections, use H3. You need to retain the order, H2, H3, 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 back to H2, H3, H3 and so on. Now, why? Well, what you're doing is you are adding ordered structure. A good example or an analogy is imagine tearing a page out of a novel, the book, and then tearing that page up into perhaps five or six strips, jumbling it up and then trying to read it and get it and understand what the page is about. It's in the wrong order. Assistive technology will read the content to the user in the order of the headings. So if you've started off with H1 and then you've used the next heading down, which is H4, just because you like the look of the font. And then the one after that is H2, again, out of style choice rather than sequentially. It's going to read this stuff in that order. Well, I can tell you that doing that, reading a novel where the five or six strips out of it have been jumbled up and read back. It's going to create a very different novel that's going to be difficult for me to understand. So if you're trying to impart a message on the page, think about adding structure to the page using headings. You can use exactly the same technique when you're creating your word documents for things like your minutes and agendas. How else does it help the user? Well, again, if I am somebody with a disability and you have quite a long webpage, what I don't want is to have to have the computer read me the entire page, only to learn that the last sentence was what I needed. Whereas if I've got a webpage that's got headings, my assistive technology can read me the headings first and then I can jump to the one that's important that I want to listen to. This also again translates well to word and agenda and minute documents. Some, you know, minutes, they can get pretty long. And so having the ability to be able to jump to it is a really good thing. You'll see there's a link on the bottom of the slide there. We've got a couple of tutorials on our website. There's one specifically about creating heading structures, some good techniques there to learn. I'm going to move on now to another common occurrence, tables. Look, I've, I've used one of the, one of my most famous, my most famous, one of my favourite film quotes, not at the table Carlos. Here's another poll. If anybody can put in the chat box exactly what film that comes from, I'd be mighty impressed. So avoid tables for anything other financial information. Tables have no navigation. We can see when we look at a table, let's just say we've got a table that's five rows, five columns. We know where stuff is because we can see where it is. So we know where to move our mouse, we know where to read. But if we can't see that table, how can we possibly know what order the content should be read in? So try very hard to avoid using tables on webpages. It's okay for financial information because that information will have been created within a financial application. So that when it is saved as a PDF or an Excel file, there is structure to the document. But just using tables on webpages creates a challenge. There's no navigation within a table for the user to know, for the user to know which order to read the content. Now I've already mentioned about colours and contrast. Try and keep the colours nice and contrast. Always try and aim for white backgrounds or extremely pale grey or dark colours with white out. Avoid pastels and light colours and try very hard to avoid using coloured text on coloured backgrounds. So I'm going to move now over to the documents because although the website itself has got structure and content on the webpages, another big regular aspect to it is uploading documents to it. So as I mentioned on the previous couple of slides, making sure that you put structure to your documents using headings is a really, really good way, a really good fast track way to make sure that those minutes and agendas that you produce are going well towards accessibility. If you're going to put pictures in the documents, make sure that you add an alt description to it. Microsoft Word has had a built in accessibility checker since 2016. It's under the review tab, puts a button there and when you press it, it will give a little fly out menu and it will tell you if there are any issues and how to resolve them. So that at the end of it, you've got yourself a nice accessible document that you can then go file, save as PDF. This is an important thing to remember, save as, not print. Print turns it into a PDF, but it's a big picture. And as I mentioned earlier on, pictures with words in can't be read by a computer. So file, save as. Now, a lot of people say to me, well, we just upload the word document. That's fine if I'm a parishioner who's got a Microsoft Office subscription. But by uploading a word document, you are creating a socio economic barrier. So whilst the document itself might be accessible, somebody might not be able to access it because they don't have any form of software. A PDF will open up on any computer without special software, whereas a word document won't. There's one other thing I want to mention about uploading word documents. It creates a, a version control issue to the security of the content. So anybody would be able to download that word document, anybody would be able to edit it. And whilst they can't upload it back to the website, they can distribute it via email, social media with incorrect information, but in the council's name, whereas a PDF is locked. So making sure that you've checked your minutes and agendas before saving them as a PDF and then uploading them is one of the best ways to make sure that the documents that you introduce to the website stay accessible. There's some exclusions. So AGAR, right now AGAR is still made on vellum with blood signed with a quill. Very, very soon, we're thinking and hoping that it's going to go a little bit more digital, but right now scans of your AGAR, no worries, they are compliant to do it that way. They are excluded from accessibility regs, you can upload those. Also declarations of interest, return registers of interest. If you've got those documents that are scanned forms, again, they can go as they are. Tip here, we dacked the signatures. The signatures don't need to be visible on the website and we have seen an increase in security issues where signatures of the chair and the clerk and the deputy chair being stolen from declarations of interest and used in fraud attempts. In my own parish, we had it where my signature and the chair's signature were taken from an old declaration of interest and somebody tried to set up a direct debit on our parish council bank account. So let's move on, what to publish. I'm sure you all know it, but for the benefit of making sure that everybody does, maybe there's some new clerks on the, on the session today. Here's a reminder, all ratified policies must be on the website. All councillors' profiles and their declarations of interest, again, as I've mentioned, we recommend redacting those signatures. Five years of AGAR. You should publish your current precept and budget info. Depending on your council size, payments over £100 or payments over £500 if you are a larger council. Obviously your contact details must be on the website. This is not as uncommon as you might imagine. We obviously interact with a lot of parish and town councils and you'd be surprised to know how many small parishes have no way of contacting the council. You must have an up to date accessibility statement and privacy policy. And we also recommend having the Freedom of Information Act publication scheme. Now, agendas, minutes, let's talk about that one. First of all, you do not need to publish the signed minutes. This is a myth that comes up quite a lot. You need to publish the minutes within 30 days of the meeting, of course, but it doesn't need to be the signed one. Because if you're going to go down that route of uploading a signed one, that means you're scanning it, which means the document isn't going to be accessible. There's no requirement for it to be the signed one. Yes, there's a requirement for the council to have the signed copy in its records, but not added to the website. Agendas and minutes need to be published in accordance to the practitioner's guide. But in terms of the number of years, it's entirely up to you as a council. You do not need by regulation, any great length of them. It is more of a recommendation. We recommend a minimum of two years so that it spans at least one whole precept. That way members of the public can look back and go, there's the thing they said they were going to do. There's the precept, there's the things that they have done. It's nice, it's, it's a good transparent approach. Obviously, if you choose to upload older files, no problem. So there you go. That's what you need to make sure that you've got published. Now, as a, as a sidebar, if you offer grants as a council, you've got to publish the grants that you offer and the methods that people need to use to apply for them, what current grants there are. But beyond that, these are your requirements. So I mentioned about scans previously, avoid Avoid scans if you possibly can. Your declarations of interest, no problem. Your AIGAR, no problem. Anything else, if you are producing it as a council, you've got to make sure that it is an accessible PDF. However, and as I've mentioned before, declarations of interest, AIGAR excluded. But third-party provided documents, so if you're given a document by the local constabulary or the local ambulance service, that does not need to meet the accessibility regs. So third-party provided, don't need to. Obviously, you should really be putting some kind of statement that goes with that document that says that if people are having trouble accessing the information and need additional support in getting the info from it, great. But you don't really need to worry about that too much. And as I've said before, signed documents don't need to be up there. Now, I'm going to move on a little bit to something that's perhaps a little less technical and a little more of a soft skill, but it's important nonetheless. And that's language, the language that you use in the writing on the webpage. Now, everybody on this session today, we, we all work in the local council sector. We all understand the terms, we all understand the language that we use. I, I myself in this session today have used WICAG, AIGAR, ROI myself. But these things don't mean anything to the members of the public. So all that I would say is, think twice about when you're writing information on a webpage. Try to use plain English, avoiding jargon and also avoid those acronyms where possible. Why? Well, A, users don't, people don't understand them. But B, again, the assistive technology will read those acronyms one letter at a time. So it's a bit of a painful experience. It's often a really good idea to just get somebody else to read what you've written, just to sense check it. It might just improve the experience for one or two more people. So there's lots of techniques, there's lots of things that I've gone through. How do you check it? How can you possibly know that your webpage, your website meets accessibility regulations? Well, the first piece of advice that I can give you is, if you haven't done this already, go away and search up Wave by WebAim. Wave by WebAim is a free browser extension that you can put on Chrome, Edge, Safari, and it allows you to check a webpage for accessibility regulation there and there, instant, give you an instant feedback. And the reason why I say go and do it and make sure that you do it is because if you are all updating your websites all the time, make it part of your process. If you've done an update, press the checking button just to make sure you've not introduced an accessibility issue. Gives you an instant snapshot. Now, it is not as good as a thorough deep accessibility scan and audit, but it'll give you a very, very good instant feedback on those common trip-up points that I've gone through already. So that's Wave by WebAim. Now, I'm going to be brave and I'm going to run it on my parish council website. So here we go. Here we go. So as I mentioned at the beginning of the session, I'm the vice chair and a parish councillor in Eton Bray, right on the southern edge of central Bedfordshire. So when I press the little button on my browser on the homepage of the website, this is what happens. You get a little flyout box from the left-hand side and it says I've got no errors, no contrast errors. Now, there's a little details tab there which will tell me that those six alerts relate to six PDFs that I link to on the homepage. That's not a fail, it's just saying you've linked to documents, are those documents going to be accessible? But this gives you a very quick, instant feedback, have I got any problems? So I would encourage you all to do that and make that part of your checking process. Now, we're going to move on a little bit more because I'm, I'm mindful that we are pressed for time. Another aspect that comes up a lot is your accessibility statement. What is it? Well, it's a document, it's a legally required document that essentially sets out the council's position on its understanding of its requirements to meet accessibility regulations, what it's done to achieve it, what it does to make sure it continues to comply, its checking process and who somebody can contact at the council if they have accessibility additional needs. There are some great model documents out there. The NALC model document itself is fantastic. It's a really good starting place. It's in place across many councils. In fact, if you go to any of the Aubergine websites, the majority of them are using that as a starting point. But it's important to remember that it's an organic document. It is not a fire and forget. Because as you add more things to the website, as you change things, you may be removing historical accessibility challenges by improving it, improving the content, or you might be introducing a new challenge. But you've got to, that accessibility statement is your opportunity to be able to set out a position. Now, one of the things that I would mention is it is a policy, so you will need to get counsel to ratify and adopt it. But there are some excellent model documents out there. Now, look, this is, this is, this should not be viewed as an inconvenience. As I said right back at the beginning, this is about talking to more people in your community. This is about engaging with another twenty percent. Those people already find it really hard to use software and websites already because of their individual disabilities and challenges. So by improving the experience on their own council's website, which by the way, they are legally entitled to access the information, this is an opportunity for you to be able to get the message out there. Yes, the regulatory stuff, it's important, you've got to do it. But I'm thinking more about the community messaging, the events that are going on, the news that's going on, all of those important things. So this is a really good way to achieve an extra twenty percent of the community. Change your mindset. It's a really positive thing to do.